This is the Canton City Council Work Session, March 5th, 2015. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the indication.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for all that are here tonight. We ask that you be with us, help to make the correct decisions for our city, and we ask that you be with our military as they protect us around the world and our officials throughout Washington. All these things we pray.
Glad to see everyone here that. Nice crap. Want to say anything that we've had? Maybe not quite the biggest, but pretty close to that anyway. I will, at this time, before the consideration to approve the agenda, I would like to take the mayor's executive privilege and move the, a couple of items here. Item TNF and TNG. For to the TNF is a discussion, the planning commission recommendation about Laurel Canyon Master Plan, and TNG is discussion, request to abandon portions of Laurel Canyon Parkway. Want to move those up to, actually, I want to move just after our 10-minute public input, okay? That's why a lot of you probably don't want to sit as long as we'll have to the rest of the evening, but you're welcome, certainly welcome to stay if you'd like to.
Can you move to the, after the adjournment? Sir.
You're going to let me help before all of it? I have one shot at that, so I'm going to move from public input to where you agree.
I was going to put your right and consent agenda.
Yeah, okay, before, before we get into the items.
Before we get into these items, okay, all right.
I don't want anybody to leave.
Dan, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
I would like to move 12A up as soon as possible, please. While there are people here that, here.
Okay, let's put, let's put 12A just before old business, okay?
I'd like to remove under old business, I'm sorry, under new, new business, 10H. That would be on the April work session instead.
I'd like to, uh, new business, first reading of the ordinance, fighting.
Oh, new ordinance to, uh... You want that, council introduced items?
Yes.
What we have here is item TNF and TNG moved up to, just following public input period or in combination, following public input period. Item 12A allude to following, just before old business, okay, and between old business and consent agenda, which there are no items at this point. And Mr. Russ, just for, just, just a little, ten-minute input here, I guess, just before, just before. And then, Mr. Huffman, the council introduced items, the nuisance ordinance. Anything else? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sir.
All in favor, signify, say aye. Opposed, no. All members voted for motion. Mr. Grant is not here at this point. I don't think he is. You have in your agenda package your financials for January 2015. This is for informational purposes, if anyone has any questions or comments, you already knows. Okay. Is the, go with that question, okay? So we don't, those are not for action, just for informational purposes. We have a number of people who have asked to speak in our public input period. We have representatives from the residents of Soleil, and we have, Mr. Dillard, you're here as well, and what, is there anyone on this list, Mr. Clark, Mr. Casey, or Mr. DeLuca, and Mr. Air, that is speaking about something other than Soleil? That's what I thought, okay. What I would like to do then, okay, we'll back, let's back up. I did skip one thing before we do that, and then I'll explain how I'd like to go ahead and receive this input. We had the minutes from February the 19th, that's in your agenda packages, are any changes or anything to those? If not, I...
I have one. Mr. Mayor, on the, one item that I, when we went out to get architects, we approved a motion to, or set forth a motion to get three architects. I think the correct term would have been architects and construction management. They would have experience at both art, as an architect and a construction manager. I'm pretty sure that's the way your notes will read when you tape back, tape it back, Susan, so I just want to be clear about what we're looking for. Is that good for you?
That's sort of a construction management, somewhat of a general term there now. Architects will manage some of that construction for you.
I think we wanted to be clear, we wanted more than just architecture, so I, I know we approved it, I want to know exactly.
I'm not sure you're going to get a construction management firm as an architect.
The correct term is probably construction administration services.
Okay.
Okay, I just knew it was more than architect we were looking for, so.
That would probably make...
As long as it's what we agreed to, that's all I want.
Okay, you make that change, but any other changes?
Does that mean that we have to have two different people? No, it's the same down.
All right, we'd have a, have a motion to approve the minutes as amended, that? Have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, signify, say aye. Opposed, no. All members voted for motion. Before we do the public input, Mr. Russ, you wanted to make a comment.
Yes, the last time I was waiting to do this, I waited to wait till council introduced items, and that was three and a half hours in, nobody was in the room. I wanted to tell, I wanted to tell everybody about the movie that I brought to the city of Canton on February 23rd called Eight Days. It was a movie, a very powerful movie, very hard to watch, but an important message about sex trafficking, and I wanted to just mention a few people who were very helpful and instrumental in bringing that to Canton. I can't tell you who the donor was that paid the money to do that because he wishes to be anonymous, but I want to thank the Canton Theater, Bob Segwin, the DDA, Juan Roach, for all their help, and especially I want to thank Mike Buckner from Audio Intersection. He personally came over and probably spent three hours with me preparing all this audio and sound for that movie. It was, it was nice to be able to push the button and it worked. So it was pretty impressive, important when you got a bunch of people waiting for something and push the button and it wasn't working, it did. So he was very helpful, and I wanted to recognize him, and thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do, since, since the issue, and it's not several issues, normally our public input period is a time in which, you know, anyone can get up and speak about anything they want to, with the full council, doesn't matter. But since all the issues, all the discussion is to be about the Laurel Canyon-Soleil issue, then what I would like to do is just say, we have about four people here that want to speak, and I would like to limit, say, 15 minutes for these, for all four of them, 15 minutes for the, anyone who wishes to speak in opposition, and then 15 minutes for the applicant. Is that acceptable, Mr. Dillard, is that acceptable to you?
Fine.
Yes. And, you know, council, if we, we can extend it if, if we need to, but if we extend it one side, we're going to extend it for the other one too, okay? We'll have to do that.
Before they want to speak, do they, can they meet those requirements, or they need to consult?
Well, it'd be good to consult, but I don't know that we, we'll just have to see how it goes. I think we'll go ahead in the order in which they signed up and want to speak, and we'll see. I'm assuming each one of these, Mr. Clark, come on up, Mr. Ted Clark from Astor Court. I would ask, excuse me, Mr. Clark, I would ask, you're going to be the time keeper, okay? So, okay, good, thank you.
Mayor Hogggood, council members. My name is Ted Clark, resident of Soleil, and a member of the advisory board. I am here to ask the council that in your discussions following, regarding the moving of the Soleil Gate, that you consider assisting us in resolving a significant issue between us, residents of Soleil, and the developer, SEC, regarding the future expansion needs of our amenities to serve the community when it is completed, and it is built out. This is an issue that if not resolved, may well have a very negative impact on our residents, their future property values, and the surrounding area. If SEC will not come together with us to discuss, prioritize, negotiate. Is it working? Can you hear me?
Can you hear?
And agree on an amenity, amenities improvement package that will secure the future of Soleil and the city of Canton that we desire, that we all desire. I'm going to speak very briefly about the topic, as briefly as I can. It is one that has been discussed a lot lately and has generated a lot of confusion, as much as accurate information. The inaccuracies usually occur because the issue is fraught with confusing statistics, dates, percentages, and numbers, and also which owner or builder did not do what when. While this data currently, certainly cannot be ignored, I'm not going to focus on it, and it is one-dimensional and static, I wish to address the dynamic, the people, our residents, and their use of and benefits from the amenities that are at the core of the active lifestyle community concept nationwide. Amenities that were promised are people when they purchase this particular lifestyle at Soleil. I note that the active, active lifestyle, which is drawing people to Soleil from around the country, carries with it a positive impact that extends beyond Soleil, Canton, and the entire area. Also at play here is Soleil's and Canton's recent national recognition as one of the best places in the nation to retire. An honor which can either be very fleeting, or it can be enduring, in terms of bringing future benefits to our area. All of us have a responsibility to preserve that lifestyle promise if it is to endure. It's our choice. We now have about 800 residents in Soleil and are on our way to nearly 1,900 at the completion of the community. Some of our amenities are at capacity as I stand here now, others will be as we go down the road toward, to the future. SEC has offered to us an expenditure of $1.1 million to build a single building, some additional parking spaces, and a garden expansion. We believe the building, as proposed, will not provide the amount of multi-use, multipurpose meeting and activity space that we need in the future. Or so, SEC is not offering any increase or improvement of the rest of our amenities in the community. Needless to say, we have significant issues with this proposal. Likewise, as it stands, the proposal does not bode well for our future property values and the continued draw of people to Soleil and this area. The developer will leave us in four years. We will still be here. We must come together now. Any assistance that the council may provide us to this end will be greatly appreciated, and I thank you for your time.
My name is Dan Casey. I live in Soleil. As you all know, I'm also a member of the Canton Fuels Board. I am not here in that capacity tonight, I'm here strictly as a citizen and resident of Soleil. Got a couple of administrative requests for you first. You're all aware of the discussion whether Laurel Canyon needs a second general entrance or an emergency gate, so I won't dwell on that, but I wanted to point out that the zoning board will make its decision on that, and I do think you know, at its April meeting. So we would first ask that you not make any related decisions until after the zoning appeals board makes its decision. So that's my first request to you. Second one is that we all know that there's more than 199 homes in Laurel Canyon, and theoretically, the issuance of building permits should have been stopped at that level. I think we went past that number just as the Great Recession occurred, Leavitts went bankrupt, developers were in serious financial problems, and I think the issue probably just didn't surface to the council at that time. But we know about it now, and the bottom line is we're asking you to issue no further building permits in Laurel Canyon until the, at least until the zoning board makes its decision, and that is taken care of. The third question I have for your request is regarding discretionary issue on the table included here, which is the relocation of the Soleil Gate. As you know, you'd have to abandon, I think it's around a quarter mile of Laurel Canyon Parkway to accommodate the relocation of the Soleil Gate. What I don't think has been brought up to you before is that in moving that gate, five existing public streets, side streets, will become part of Soleil, and I just, I wrote down the names, Laurel Overlook, Woodridge Terrace, Laurel Canyon Trail, Woodsdale Drive, and Misty View Drive. These are all existing streets, they're not accepted for maintenance yet, and Mr. Dyer will either confirm or tell me I've got this wrong, but I think he agrees that they would be subject to abandonment as well. So there's something else you should put on the table. So there's something else you should put on the table. Bobby, have I got that right?
Well, they can be public, so they're a little different situation than Laurel Canyon Parkway, which is in the city.
Right. Okay. So I just wanted to put that on the table. As far as the first request on this though, when that, when and if you agree to abandon this Parkway, the city will be relieved of maintenance responsibility. The developer will gain benefit because he has more houses to sell, and the Soleil people will get the responsibility for maintenance. So if you choose to abandon that road, we ask that you hold the developer responsible to make sure that road is in, you know, pristine condition when this is all done, because there are tens of thousands of heavy equipment trucks that go across that every day. So I don't know if it's a bond or escrow or just an agreement, but do we not, basically we don't want Soleil to have to eat the cost and SEC to get the benefit. Okay. The last thing in this regard goes back to Mr. Clark's remarks on the amenities. And again, this is tied to the movement of the gate. My understanding is that's not a zoning issue, it's a discretionary issue that when you move the gate that you can make certain requirements. And the, the fact is, as Mr. Clark said, we don't feel that the enhancements in amenities for Soleil are adequate at this time that have been suggested by SEC. Soleil has an extensive amenity package. It's the thing that draws people to buy in Soleil. It's the thing that makes Soleil a jewel of Canton, okay? It's the thing that the people who reside there pay thirty-two hundred dollars a year to use. And it is the thing, the singular thing, I believe, that determines the general welfare and the property values of the people of Soleil. So what you're, what we're asking you to do is to help us maintain the existing level of welfare and, and property values. Yes, Susan's, I'm trying, Susan. So just to give you a brief comparison, numbers, the developer has suggested building additional clubhouse space equal to twenty-four percent of the existing clubhouse, or about one quarter. The budget for that is one point one million dollars. The existing clubhouse is valued for insurance purposes at eight million dollars. Now, if I take a quarter of that, it seems to me it takes two million dollars to build something similar if you're going to build another quarter of it. So I don't know how you get it done for one point one million. So the first question we have is, you know, what kind of space are you going to get, get for that? Beyond that, there's another two point four million dollars of insured value in all the outside amenities and so forth, which aren't being addressed at all, unless I'm told if there's money left over in the one point one million, which I can't see happening, okay? So that's just to give you an idea of, you know, the breakout there. Also, when we've looked at the design level of the amenities, we feel that the houses overdesigned are more like forty-eight percent, about twice what the developer's saying, and the budget probably should be in the four to five million dollar range instead of one point one, okay? Just to give you an idea. There's two things, and I'll, and I'll be done here. There's two things that we're really asking you to do. Number one, there was a survey that SEC made of all community residents in November of last year. They got all the input and they kept it. It was never published. And frankly, without publishing that, the citizens have no real basis on which to negotiate. They need to see what everyone said and what the priorities are. So the first thing that we're asking you to do is to require the developer to release the full and complete survey, both the detail and the summary, unedited, so that the citizens can see, you know, what their, their neighbors voted for and put things in priority, okay? The second thing we're asking you to do is to require the developer to sit down with the members of Soleil and come to a reasonable and fair decision on what amenities are. We're not looking for our dreams, okay? We're not. We're not looking for anything better than we have now. We're just asking for the, the welfare, general welfare, property values to consider, to continue as they are now. And I don't think anybody, you know, I said maybe it takes over four to five million. You know, it probably, you know, in the end, we're not going to end up there, but it takes considerably more than, than it's been suggested. Okay. So that's what we ask you to do. You're our last hope. If you don't help us, if you don't apply, apply this as a requirement on moving the gate, then the developer will do whatever the developer wishes to do without any say on the part of the residents. They, they don't have to ask. Okay? Thank you.
We have two minutes left. So any, any extension of this will be a commensurate extension with, to the other side as well, so. Mr. Ray DeLuca?
I'll try to do this in three minutes for you, make it a little bit quicker. I don't like to read stuff, but if I feel if I read it, I can get away from just rambling on. First of all, I like to tell that my name is Ray DeLuca and I'm the president of the homeowners of Rock Creek Estates. I've lived here for forty years. Our homeowners have used Honeydew Drive and Shoal Creek Road as the only means of ingress and egress from the beginning. We have had an uncanny number of times when the roads have been closed due to ice, snow, fallen trees, road damage from water leaks, and many vehicle accidents, but we've had to learn how to survive with these inconveniences. I realize that the homeowners of Laurel Canyon were promised and need a second way to get in and out of their subdivision, especially with the amount of homes, and we agree with that, but Honeydew and Shoal Creek is not the answer. Four weeks ago, the planning appeals board tabled their decision on recommendations of the second access and/or emergency exit only, and wanted to conduct more studies and look to alternative access points. They expressed their decision to the City of Canton Planning Board, and the board as well as the attorney from Laurel Canyon agreed with both groups that currently Honeydew and Shoal Creek are too dangerous for continuous travel, let alone an additional three hundred vehicles per day. During a planning board meeting, the board members as well as the attorney did not know the correct names or locations of the roads involved. And the homeowners had to explain which roads went with which names and where they were located. However, even though some of the board did not know where the roads nor their locations, they decided to vote in favor of using Honeydew and Shoal Creek as a continuously open second entrance and exit instead of an emergency exit only, and onto a dangerous and unsafe road that everyone already agreed was not a good idea. Currently, there are hazards on the road which include but are not limited to a large sinkhole in front of Whispering Hills subdivision, a poor visual access on the Honeydew from Puckett Creek, erosion of dirt that supports some of the guardrail posts along the roads, and erosion around and below the bridge in front of Doctor Cutson, which is near Dead Man's Curve. At least three deaths. Don't laugh because everybody knows what I'm talking about when I say Dead Man's Curve. If you've lived in Canton more than ten years, you know where Dead Man's Curve is. At least three deaths have occurred on these roads in the past, and unfortunately, there have been many severe accidents with severe injuries. There have been at least four studies on these roads in the past by state county agency as well as independent studies and EPA. All have said that the road will not support additional traffic without significant geographical road improvements, and the roads cannot interfere with the creek bed along one side of the road. Our roads, just like Laurel Canyon Boulevard, were closed last week due to ice and snow. So how would the people of Soleil benefit from using Honeydew and Shoal Creek Road? I have worked with a few city and county officials in the past few weeks to look for alternative access points, and we believe there are at least two areas that may be used. One area would be off Old Shoal Creek Road, once again, Old Shoal Creek Road, where the city already has an easement that is used for sewage hook up with Laurel Canyon. The second site would be off Sam Nelson Road. The only thing blocking this area is a small partial of land that was not included when a new developer purchased a property of Laurel Canyon from the previous owner. The attorney for Laurel Canyon has stated that Laurel Canyon is landlocked, and there are no additional access areas are available. It appears that there are hundreds of undeveloped acres that surround Laurel Canyon, which I believe a portion can either be developed, improved, and/or purchased to make a second and/or third access. And I thank you for your time, and I appreciate if you don't vote for something like this to save the people of Rock Creek, Puckett Creek, and Whispering Hills subdivisions. Thank you.
So we have seventeen minutes. Okay, Bruce Sager?
I represent the Puckett Creek Homeowners Association, the one that backs onto Soleil. We share a creek between us, and most of you know where it is. We support Laurel Canyon getting a second, and you will need a third entrance into your properties. But we feel that Honeydew is not the right one. Not only the things that Ray talked about, but if you ride along there, you'll see some deterioration of the road where it's sliding into the creek, where the pavement is breaking, things of that nature. We do support that as an emergency-only entrance, but we'd like it to be two-way, and we'd like it to be controlled only by the police, the fire, and the EMTs. Ray talked about Dead Man's Curve. When I first moved here a little over ten years ago, a friend of mine came to visit, and he said, you know, strange things happen. I saw a car license plate that I thought was mine, then I realized it was when I went around that curve. It is a very tight curve. Point of Puckett Creek is a subdivision that's about twelve years old now. Three developers have gone bankrupt. It currently does not have a developer, but there are eighty-five lots in there, of which thirty-four are developed. Only one house is empty. There are seven rentals that come and go, but basically, there are twenty-six of us that are full-time. It is a working-class community. In most cases, it's both the husband and a wife that leave for work in the morning. I'm one of the very few, and one of the other gentlemen with me is the only other gentleman that does not go to work in the morning. We've been retired for a few years. But I come and go three or four times a day, and as I'm pulling out onto Honeydew, I look to the left, I look to the right, I look to the right again, and then I gun it, because we sit back and you cannot see them coming up Honeydew until they are right on top of you. And the people coming down Honeydew are moving faster than I think this speed limit is. But yet, as I made, that is not a safe road, and we do not support using Honeydew for anything other than the current volume of traffic, and we would like to see some improvements. But again, we would support it as an emergency entrance exit because it benefits you and it benefits us. I mean, my wife was broadsided on Honeydew and clogged up traffic for about three hours. So we'd like to have a second entrance to get the emergency people in there. Okay, thank you for your time, gentlemen. I hope you stay with us and help us keep that as emergency only. Thank you.
Okay, so we have twenty-one minutes. Okay, the applicant would come forward, we'll, unless there's anyone else that would like to speak, I think that that's all the signed up public input there. Twenty-one minutes over here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mr. Council. I'm Doug Dillard. Jill Arnold and I with Percy Freeze and Torbison represent the applicant. I'm not going to take twenty-one minutes just to put you at ease. But I, I am going to respond to, to what's going on here tonight. These fine people all have the right to be here, but they don't have the right to make you negotiate an amenity package for their neighborhood. And that's what they're trying to do. Casey is good as he is, he's a member of the Zone of Review Board, and he's a resident of Soleil, laid out some eighteen conditions that needed to be put on the, on this request. It's not your duty. It's not your, it's not your obligation as councilman of this city. You're here to protect property rights, and you're here to provide protection of public health, safety, and welfare. And this applicant doesn't want to do anything other than that, because what they are saying is, you've approved now, previous council, not you, but you've approved at one point over two thousand units on this property. They also talked about a second entrance, but your ordinance gives you the right to waive that and/or the city engineer the right to waive that requirement. Now, you've built over five hundred units, the second entrance was supposed to be required after two hundred, and it hadn't happened. We've worked with Ken and Steve, tried to find in the records if somebody signed off on it. We can't find where anybody ever signed. But code section of your, of your ordinance says, and this is UDC nine dash oh three point twelve, that all subdivisions resulting in the creation of two hundred or more lots shall be provided with a minimum of two entrances. Where the property configuration prohibits or makes impractical installation of two public access entrances, an alternative access may be approved, or this provision may be waived by city council. We can't find an official waiver, we can't find the city engineer signing off on it, but what we do know is that five, over five hundred units have been built out there, and there is no second entrance. So our position is, if you haven't officially waived it, you've waived it by application. This property owner cannot be required to put it in. Now, what does he propose? He said, I'll put the access in, but because of the conditions of Honeydew Road, Shoal Creek Road, we want it to be limited to emergency access only. We've given you a traffic report that shows the impact of this future development, which is six additional lots over what you have currently approved. It says the existing road system can handle the traffic, and that this secondary easement entrance, because of the condition of Honeydew and Shoal Creek, should be used only for emergency Far as we know, police department, fire department, nine-one-one guys, all agree with that. But these property owners don't want that. They want another access. And in the process, they're suggesting that this applicant spent almost ten million dollars to improve a road system that the city and the county ought to do themselves. What are we paying taxes for? You're going to make a private developer come in and spend money to improve a road system that they ought to be? It's a public road. It ain't our road. It's a public road. We'll improve our road. We'll buy the gate and put the gate in, but you're going to say we're going to go down and improve Dead Man's Curve or whatever it is? When it's existed for fifty, sixty, seventy years and been ignored by the local government? And you're going to make this property owner come in and pay for it? And pay taxes? Suggest to you that's not right. Suggest to you that that's an exception. Suggest to you that it's unconstitutional as set forth by the Supreme Court doing in United States in the cases that I gave you. So what we ask you to do is we think... When it's existed for fifty, sixty, seventy years and been ignored by the local government? And you're going to make this property owner come in and pay for it? And pay taxes? Suggest to you that's not right. Suggest to you that that's an exaction. Suggest to you that it's unconstitutional as set forth by the Supreme Court doing it in United States in the cases that I gave you. So what we ask you to do is three things. We'll deal with the amenity issues at meetings. Obviously, these folks are not satisfied. We'll use you as leverage to get more, okay? Secondly, the planning commission's recommendation that building permits be withheld until a second full access gate is operational is unconstitutional. The county has informed us the second full access gate would require significant road improvements to Honeydew, Old Shoal Creek Trail, and Shoal Creek Drive. Some of these improvements are found in condition number fourteen in the two-hundred-and-five conditions of approval. And as I stated before, these improvements would require more than eight and a half million dollars, close to ten million dollars in improvement. Third, a fourth part of this whole thing is, we do not want our residents to get trapped in the neighborhood in an emergency situation. Our traffic studies show that without the second gate, they've got access into from their subdivision. Number three, when we say emergency access gate only means this. Your code requirement does not require two full access gates. Code requirement says another access. Doesn't say full access, limited access, emergency access, whatever. Code section says access. We're saying that the emergency access provision, as we have suggested it, is sufficient. It says, as I've said before, this condition can be waived, but if you don't want to waive it, the county supports the designation that we have suggested, and that residents living near the proposed emergency access gate only would operate under some of the following conditions that we've talked to police department knows about this. Gate specifics, height, fencing, the systems we use, that we will use at the gate for emergency personnel would be siren-operated system, or what they call knock blocks, video surveillance, signage, and entering into a plan with the city and county to develop a plan for how the gate would operate in times of emergency. You've got to define emergency. You've got to find those that are getting control of it. We'll have guards out there that'll be a part of it, but they've got to report to and be responsive to police, fire, nine-one-one. However we decide is the most safe way to provide for that protection for the neighborhood. So in summary, planning commission makes the recommendations to you, which were for approval, most of which we support. They recommended the following. Revising conditions of approval as they relate to Soleil, subject to and accept condition number fourteen, which is the one I just mentioned. Revising used development restriction in Pod nine to allow for single-family detached dwellers. Currently, Pod nine permits sixty single-family attached dwellers. We're saying that those from being attached to DDA. A change in the number of lots in Pods five and six to reflect changes in ownership since the master plan was revised in two thousand and five. That's for the technical issue. Planning commission recommended approval of that. Transfer the density per certain condition number forty-six of the two-five-thousand-and-five conditions in Pods L one through L eleven. And what happens there is, we want to be sure that the density and the number that we're showing on those pods reflect zoning category for each of those pods. And it's likely that two units, the acres, no more than that, twenty acres, if you don't have more than forty units. It's that kind of calculation. Relocate the existing gate and guardhouse entrance on Laurel Canyon Parkway and abandonment of a portion of Laurel Canyon Parkway. I think you understand, moving it up to include more of the subdivision. And then, the one that they recommended denial on, that we're asking that you approve, is waive the code's two entrance requirements and designate proposed second entrance. That subdivision is intersected with Honeydew as emergency access only. In that situation, they said, you've got to put it in. You're not going to get any permits to put it in, and you've got to improve the system. And we think that that's an exaction and taking as set forth in, in, as I had set forth in my last. There's thirty-six lots. It's owned by...
Colton.
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 Colton. If we don't have authorization, come forward tonight. We expect that we will have authorization for those thirty-six lots before you vote on it on the nineteenth, the nineteenth. But we just discovered that within the last week, that we actually didn't have their authorization. And to rezone property, you've got to have authorization to property ownership. We expect to have that because we're purchasing those lots. But I just want you to be aware that that is upcoming, and that is a technical issue that we want to deal with. In short and in close, Jay Clark has developed property in the Atlanta region for almost thirty years. He is recognized as a premier developer throughout the southeast. Soleil and Laurel Canyon are great developments. They are class, class developments. We are not here to try to change that, but we're here to try to improve it. The thing about it, though, is that we can't agree to allow you to be used as upon to make us do those things that we need to do or don't need to do that you are not in control of. The exactions, the amenity package, all of the issues that relate to the development of this property, as it relates to the zoning, the land use, and the public infrastructure, are within your domain. It's within your exercise of your police power to properly zone and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. But at the same time, the law requires balance. Law requires that you balance our rights as property owners to use the property against the public's protection of their health, safety, and welfare. We think our proposal does that. We think our proposal is reasonable. We think our proposal will make this a more valuable, negative, more valuable asset for the community and for Canton than it currently is. We got seven hundred units out there that haven't been built. They haven't been built for a reason. We want to bring them to you. We want to build them. We want to be a part of your community, and we ask you to...
Thank you. All right. Twenty-one minutes?
Twelve.
Twelve? Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would want to speak on behalf of the applicant? There's like three, three minutes on the head.
I'm a member of the council. My name's Alan Scholman. I'm a resident of Soleil. I live at six fifty Hemlock Trail. There's just one point that I want to address that the attorney had made. The number of houses are being increased into our development by about a hundred and eighty-seven now. What's happened is, we bought this facility, and we bought our share of those common areas, thinking that there would be a far smaller number of houses that we would have to share those amenities with. And now, by moving that gate, you've invited a hundred and eighty-seven families to join our party. We're being robbed of our individual shares of those common areas. That is the action that this council is going to be taking by moving the gate. Once you move the gate, you invite those hundred and eighty-seven people in. So the relationship between making the amenities at the same level to the movement of the gate is the reason why we think this council has every right to condition the movement of that gate and the invitation of those hundred and eighty-seven homes to an improvement in the amenities.
Okay, thank you. I'd actually ask for someone with the applicant. If you have anything else, I'd be happy to give you another five minutes if you want anything else. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. In fact, I love you for being here. We will now move along with our, actually, move these items up, item ten F, and that is for the council-only discussion at this point, if there is some discussion. Ten F is discussion of the planning commission recommendation, MP fifteen oh one dash zero eleven, Laurel Canyon master plan amendments.